Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the City of Trail Council. And we are in the council committee room. And you can also access it via Zoom. It is three o'clock and we are in the committee of the whole meeting. And then immediately following the committee, the whole meeting will go into the post council meeting. And then reconvene at six o'clock for the regular council meeting. The meeting webinars are recorded and published on the city's YouTube site at trail.ca and on YouTube. So the first item on the agenda is to call to order. And we will have someone to adoption of the agenda. Thank you, Councilor Martin. And do we have a seconder, all those in favor? That was Carrie, thank you. Now, I need a resolution to resolve into the committee of the hall. Councilor Benson, thank you, second over, and all those in favor. And that is carried. So this afternoon, we do have a delegation. And it is Keith Smythe and Rachel Brown. And they are representing the communities in Bloom. And they are here to present the 2025 budget and the future government structure. So welcome.
Thank you very much. Right?
Yes.
Glad to be here. I go around shaking hands with many of you. I wonder if you got the the package we sent. Okay, portfolio, thank you very much. Before I start, I'd like to, for those who don't know, but I'm sure you all do know Rachel. Rachel has been the the anchor of the communities in Bloom for a significant amount of time. And she still is. And I must say that if you went by the wine today up towards Rosen Avenue, you would have seen her working in her usual outfit that she worked so hard on. And she dressed up nicely to come here today. So what I'd like to do is to explain a little bit of stuff in context just before I start. And basically, I'm kind of thinking, people may be thinking, why the hell is Keith Smythe here? You don't see me out there doing the work in the gardens like you see in the CIB Facebook page, where it's amazing how many volunteers we have. We have a significant amount of volunteers. And what I work very closely is Dan and Lana and also with Rachel. So the comments I'm going to speak to is basically my role here, so you know that. And I prepared it, so I'll read it out. Okay, because of a long personal friendship and working relationship with Dan and Lana, I was approached by them actually prior to the COVID pandemic to assist them in formulating a plan for succession. Their extraordinary journey of dedication and accomplishments for their city has been remarkable. But alas, it's become time for them to contemplate where the future will take them. Of course, I promised to do what I could, and I became immersed in the workings of CIB. It's unfortunate the role these cannot be here, but I think between Rachel and I will be able to address your inquiries. Incidentally, Dan and Lana are completely cognizant and supportive of us being here. I say this because simultaneously, while Dan was working on the 2025 budget, a small CIB group with Dan was working on an inclusive presentation aimed to gather and document historical practices and to describe all aspects of CIB's seasonal duties, including both budgetary practices. The final report was presented to the CIB volunteers, essentially the CIB committee, two weeks ago on Monday, May the 12th at the Clubwell Lodge. Part of the report you have before you, Communities in Bloom Budget Analysis, represents hours of work and deliberation. You have never seen this in the format presented. It's to assist with your meeting request. For this section, a dedicated effort was made to pull together invoices, receipts, and city records, as well as Dan's narrative budget submission of 2024. The prime aim was to categorize information under broad but specific headings. The results are in front of you. It represents the best we could do to create a document that corresponds with Dan's 2025 budget submission. We think this format provides both the CIB and city a better comparison tool to vet and examine financial matters. Hopefully, this will assist in focusing questions. Secondly, for part two today, the full CIB report contains thoughts on ideas for the future direction of the successful CIB city connection from the CIB's point of view. It is our feeling that unique relationship has overall been a great success for many, for many perspectives. We also believe for betterment and advancement, many organizational systemic improvements can be formalized. To this end, CIB recommends to the city that a select group of participants be identified to review current practices, identify challenges, and recommend actionable solutions. So in part, then, that's an introduction. But really, I'm hoping you had an opportunity to see the pages two and three of the document that we sent, because that is the one I just mentioned, where we have broken down everything into basically a spreadsheet, a colorful spreadsheet. You're used to, from Dan, when he gave his report for a number of years, more of a narrative. The budget was more narrative. So we worked hard to try and pull this together. It's been quite difficult, quite difficult, trying to find all the paperwork. That's basically invoices, receipts, et cetera, the city's records. But I think we did a pretty good job. And from the 2004, of course, as I said, Dan pulled together the, well, we kind of pulled together how it looks with the 2025, 2025, the one you have. So with that, we're open to any questions you may have of us in terms of what you need to know about the budget. We'll try and answer them.
Okay, thank you, Keith. I will open it up to council to see if they have any questions or comments for Keith and Rachel. Councilor Cashel.
Thank you through the chair. Just a question on the relationship between Rachel and CIB. CIB is a volunteer organization, as we all know. Rachel is a paid employee. Now, that's my first question, are you an employee of CIB or are you a contractor with CIB?
I believe I am a contractor with other contracts, whatever that.
Okay.
They're referring to me as a hired manager.
But it's condition your volunteer.
Yeah, as well, yeah.
Because, I mean, if you look at the budget, you know, the substantial amount of it goes to your wages. Now, that's my next question, is you have staff that work under you or with you?
Yeah, so I have subcontractors, at least two each year, and they help out with watering and weeding, some specialty pruning. So I know that my business name is a little bit confusing. My business name is Rachel Brown. But it's, there are several different contractors that are paid through.
So the money's here, the 99, 375, that includes money that you pay to your subcontractors. So do you consider yourself to be a subcontractor of CIB?
I don't, I don't know.
Because that's where this gets complicated, because embedded in CIB is a contract. I bring this up because, and I think I shared it with with your party members, party members, your group members. There's another company in town, MB Landscaping, and I think I shared this with council as well, that has a contract with the city. And that contract is roughly $133,250 a year, and they do bids as well. And I was just looking at their contract, it's 22 pages long. So, you know, the city's gone to great care and due diligence to preparing this. So some of the questions that I saw on this, I'll just ask. Basically, one question would be, permit me through the chair, just a couple more questions here. The contractor will provide the following documents prior to April 1st. This is the MB contracting. Insurance, as noted in Schedule D, and that is $2 million inclusive per occurrence against, well, that's a general liability insurance. They also provide a worksafe BC clearance letter and a city of trail business license. I'm wondering if those are part of what you submit to the city as well?
Yeah, so in the spring, I submitted to Mr. Butler a clearance letter, and that covers the subcontractors that I pay, as well as myself, through personal optional protection. I also submit general liability insurance, $2 million, for myself and as well as for Taryn. And then I haven't submitted my business license, but I have it.
Okay, okay, thank you. Yeah, that's, that's all for me, thank you, Chair.
Okay. I mean, Mr. Smith, yes.
First of all, I think, as I said, that's a very good question. It seems to be the wonderment of how does Rachel fit into everything? And getting to know Rachel and when we talked to her for a long period of time is that there's history here. And the history goes back to Dan, when he was the volunteer and all the volunteers did work for, it became the CIB. The fact it came to CIB and Communities in Bloom and linked to a national organization was a feat unto itself. So the task of the CIB, as it grew and got bigger, Rachel, at her capacity, and Rachel maybe you could speak to that time in your life when you were doing work as a subcontractor, got affiliated with Dan and got involved in the city's proceedings.
Oh, yeah, so if that would kind of help clarify how this arrangement came to be. In 2018, I submitted a quote to do the watering, because Dan and Lana had expressed that there was, yeah, that there was no one to water hay baskets. We had done a bunch of contract work through CIB in previous years, random things like, you know, helping to spread manure on beds if there weren't enough volunteers. So, yes, in 2018, I submitted a quote for that work. Now, that was the same year that the landscaper and volunteer coordinator stepped back unexpectedly. So while I'd never submitted a quote for watering, there was this need for somebody to take over the management of planting the beds and coordinating the volunteers. And so I stepped in. And I continued to manage hourly, and the rest is history.
Could you speak to that too, Rachel, about what hourly means? How do you do that?
Oh, for every hour that I work, I charge. And then I, you know, I keep notes on what hours, what the time is spent for. Is that?
So I think that's good for me as an outsider. I see a bit of that, a bit of the conundrum. Because Rachel's, of course, making a living, trying to make a livable salary by this technique she has. But meantime, she's being a volunteer too. She is looking after over 120 volunteers and contacting them, running a Facebook page, and putting incredible hours in in the planning part and designing part. But I can tell you that as we did our report, which you don't see today, you're only getting here part of our report. But the full report that we've done now, the full report, has got all the seasonal activities that she does along with the CIB, but ultimately, a lot of it falls on Rachel. But we have that. I think that's a significant piece here in how we think this whole organization will go forward. Thank you, Rachel.
Yeah, just through the chair, just another question to tie into that. So you submit an invoice to CIB for hours that you've worked?
To CIB and to the city through accounts payable. Every 15 years.
And you're an honorable person, I've worked with you in the volunteer field. And I'm not questioning your integrity or anything else. But is this a system that is foolproof, that could not be manipulated by someone, say, that was in your position and not as honorable and as full of integrity as you are? Could that whole system be manipulated?
Absolutely, but I feel that's true with many.
But checks and balances are in place in a lot of contracts to kind of eliminate that. And this is my concern is, not with you, Ms. Brown, but just in general, with the way that it's set up is, you know, is it, is it foolproof, basically?
No.
And we talk about accountability, and we talk about transparency, and those things. All that, that's why I'm bringing up the topic, right? Because in order to have that, you need to have a system where it's completely transparent and accountable. So anyway, thank you for your explanation.
Thank you, Councilor Cashel, and Councilor Hanson.
Thank you, sir, the chair. You broke down, so you've got two subcontractors. And then I'm looking at the wages here. So this year, for 2024, you're charging $38 an hour. So is that $38 an hour for you or $38 an hour for you and your two employees? Like, I just, I'm just wrapping my head around that part of the budget. Are you charging out, you're kind of taking on a role as a higher level foreman or manager in landscaping, but then you've got two additional individuals that work with you. So, I mean, I just, I'm trying to wrap my head around kind of the wages and what kind of a average salary for someone that's a foreman for landscaping would be, as well as, you know, I'm considering what our, you know, city staff get paid, right? Like, in the back of my mind, and the dollars and cents and everything. And so, so I just, can you speak to how that works? Or is it everybody getting paid the same?
Yeah, so the difference here between the $38 an hour, that was for last year. I've since increased it, increased it. I charge $45 an hour for everything. And I pay to the subcontractors a reduced rate, which is $35 an hour. And 45, 35, 40. So in that, there are quite a bit of expenses. So there's all of the general liability insurances. There's, you know, our own gas that's on, is when we're using our own vehicles. And there's quite a, there's quite a bit of just overhead, having to do our own accounting and stuff like that. We also don't charge overtime, and we don't have any benefits. So while some of the public works might be, you know, maybe less than $45 an hour, we also don't have the same benefits.
Thank you, can I follow that? Sorry, and I'm looking at an overall kind of BC range of landscaping foreman, kind of ranges, right? And I mean, what, that 45 bucks an hour, that's quite high, like, the average is about 32. So I was just trying to wrap my head around how that breakdown happens. If, you know, and then if your subcontractors are technically working for you, are they then just laborers? You know, are they arborists? Do they have, you know, horticulture background, training, et cetera, for the breakdown? I just, like, the wages are the hard thing for me to kind of wrap around. And, you know, then the other question I have is, you know, watering, like, how many beds are physically watered? How many are wrapped in in our underground sprinklers that physically have to be watered? Or is this something that is not within our realm of this, this 50?
So there, there is a lot to unpack there. And some of the beds are on irrigation, some are not. Some irrigation gets broken, and we have to go and handwater it. Regarding the, the, you know, typical rate for horticulturists, horticulturists, we do hire a red seal gardener, and her typical rate is, I think it's $55 or $60 an hour, and she does some specialty pruning for the city. Yeah, I mean, I don't, is that it?
Yeah.
Let me know if there's any other. Thank you very much.
There's a lot of factors. You're probably seeing, or you are seeing for the first time even some of these numbers which are on the sheet here. And I think almost every one of them needs an explanation of some sort. But we made a gigantic effort trying to bring it to your attention here, some things to look at. So I do appreciate the questions which are coming forward. I think there has to be even more of a degree of analysis of things too. I'd give you a couple of little flavor of a couple other things, for example. Even the city itself, and the way they do their, their costing out, as you say, is that sometimes, as a city has to be involved with public works doing particular activity, those, everything they do gets put to a particular category in terms of billing. Well, sometimes, an overlap may come where, in our records, public work entry would come in. So what we did in, what we tried to do was to separate all of this. And so these things, I think, really need to be looked at in terms of perfect, or a better way to analyze the budget each year. The other thing that Rachel's doing at the moment, which she'd never done before, and she gets all her invoices this year for the payment of anything, she's putting the codes down to the records we have here. So this coding part, I think, is another piece that could be improved as we go forward.
Thank you, Keith. Councilor Benson, did you know?
Yes, thank you through the chair. Hers is probably a question maybe for staff that is in alignment with what Councilor Cashel was talking about, is that I assume that we receive the invoice and it gets some, someone approves the invoice for payment, right? Like, there's a process of that, with similar to any other contractor sending an invoice. It's not like someone's there making sure they get all the hours that they get, but it does go to someone for checks and balances. And then my second question, I just wanted to talk about the volunteers, 120, like, individuals. Not just like, wow, 120 people.
Yes. This is what she calculated here, I'll give you what I do give you. Actually, 120 volunteers for a total of 3,500 hours engagement in 2024.
I didn't know if that was like 120 times, like, one person, or like, but that's awesome.
Yeah. Yeah, we work with a lot of bigger groups, like Trail Association for Community Living, when taking a hike, we seem to get lots of people coming in all at once.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Is there any other questions, Councilor Martin?
Thanks to the chair. Keith, is there an opportunity for us to see that other report that you're referring to, the more intense report?
Yes, my preference is, is we, you can't, I mean, here's the kind of thing I've talked about here, is that there needs to be some way to see that, the whole report, and it's wholesome, and start to see how things can be improved and changed, et cetera. It's, it's going to be that activity. We said how we're doing it, it's all there in paper. But we thought today, we can't get into the depth of that, it's just too much stuff. I can also tell you, on page three of my submission, or not, sorry, wrong word, our submission, on page, on page four, this, page four, what I tried to do, and we tried to do it in a nutshell, was to break down how the CIB theme, idea, how it applies to what the city needs to do and their responsibilities. And in the other column, is a breakdown of actually what the CIB does. I don't know if you had a look at that. It's got two different columns there. So you're able to see in a nutshell, this may be able to help you here, Terry, to show you the different tasks that are done by both groups. But at the same time, that has to be polished up. It has to be streamlined and refined if this is to go forward. And I mentioned one other thing too, I won't leave here without saying this to you. There is a, there is a certain dilemma. And the dilemma is that flowers, plants, they have to be bought. And when you buy your flowers, the flowers for the 2026 year have to be bought in the 2025 year. So already, before, if there's going to be a change in the CIB, mainly because of the leaving of the volunteers, then there has to be something that happens here. And so now, in the thing that happens with a new kind of leadership, new way of going forward, there has to be a decision that does go forward, and someone has to authorize the paying of those flowers for the next budget year.
Okay, thank you, Keith. So I'm just going to say that I appreciate your report. And I understand the work you did was really, really time-consuming and detailed, and we really appreciate that. There's just so many different things on here from 2024 to 2025 that are different. I think it's going to take a different meeting to discuss that. My concern right now, and just from the conversation that we had earlier, was, is about Rachel, because since 2018, I don't know if you've had a record of employment given to you at the end of each year, so you can collect unemployment, and make sure you're getting your CPP payment and all of that kind of stuff. So to me, that's really important to find out before moving forward as well. It's, it's something that we have to look at, and we are willing to have another look at it with you. But I don't, I don't think there can be any resolution today. So my suggestion would be that we connect with staff again and have another discussion about your draft and your budget analysis before we move forward. And we know there's a deadline. We know that there's something, you know, that we have to get done before October, okay? Councilor Benson.
Thank you through the chair. Just a question about the 2026 flowers. Who purchases them and when do they, when are they purchased?
So I, I do all the ordering. I, I have a little date here that a budget and a plan should be in place by October 1st, because it'll take us about a month with all of the bed cleanup and whatnot, to get them in by November 1st. That is the date that we need to submit the order by.
And you submit the order, so through the chair, okay.
Okay, Councilor, I'm sorry, I always want to call you Councilor. Mr. McCleod, go ahead.
Just a couple of things for council to be aware of. First of all, the city would never give Rachel an hourly. She would not get an hourly from CIB either, because you are a contractor. That's all part of your responsibility. You put in your payment, or you put in your invoice, you have your payment, rest is the accounting, CPP, EI, any of those sort of things, that's all, that all falls on the contractor. I just will also say that the city's been after the change on this for quite a while. This is taking a very, very long time. And, and I know we've kind of blown through some dates. And no issue with coming together with staff, but council has to be prepared for wanting professional experience and commitment from staff on what we should do here. That's going to be key. And if, and if it's, you know, it's sort of kind of rolled over and rolled over, there's been sort of a lack of being able to pull back and get inside some of this information, which is good. You know, this is sort of, the council's really, and CIB has to think about, like, do you need to have judges? There's lots of places that we drop these sorts of things off. Those are unpopular sometimes as they grow, but it gets very kind of, you know, held on tightly. So those are things that I think both CIB and the city, now, in waiting for this, there is definitely, you know, basically two models. And so this has not been, something that hasn't been, well, there's eight models or whatever. There's been two models, two models have been presented. There's been a struggle on which one to go to. So I think actually, in a lot of sense, it's not that difficult to make a decision. A decision needs to be made. And then from there, the fallout kind of goes as to, are we going in this direction? How are we going to structure it? How are we going to?
Councilor Cashel.
And thanks to the chair. On Mr. McCleod, it's further to your comments, would it be prudent, and I'm prepared to make the motion to ask for a staff report on Communities in Bloom, what exactly is a requirement, what the, what the expectations are, and touch on some of the similarities that maybe that we would find in the MB landscaping contract? It might be helpful to get some clarity on what the staff might consider to be best practices.
Certainly, we could do that. I do know that our general manager has already sort of placed that in front of council, and placed that in front of CIB. There's been a great reluctance, I think, to make a decision. So again, it's a good thing, because we get to a decision here. And then from there, we move forward on what's the best way to, to have the beautification of the city. I mean, that's what this is all about, and it's been very successful. We don't want to lose that history, but sometimes it is also difficult. If you have someone looking at it from one angle, that may not be felt, is either respecting or is in line with what they think. And that's where sometimes the rub can kind of go, especially if you move it into not being an entity that's sort of outside of the city, but then it becomes inside the city. There's, I think, a little bit more, you know, we can't afford to do that, not a case of, well, we need to, well, we've always known it that way. And so that's the challenge, I think. And it's to be, and it's to respect the hard, hard work.
Of course. 24 years.
Yes, and this is because it's not uncommon, organizations that are sort of outside. And this one never, even though they were talked about many years previous, that the report was done from city council, that this needs to break off, and either be a committee and/or become society, it just never becomes society. And there's been some reluctance to that, and that's fine. But it's, it's in this nebulous place right now that has to be solved. And I think that the great, we've got effort coming here, and maybe some new people trying to lead that charge has been very difficult to get movement on it previously.
Okay.
So I'm more confused now than I wanted to, this whole thing started, to be honest with you, yeah? And I'm the liaison between the city council and the communities in Bloom. So, thank you.
Yeah, for me, it's a case of be fine, meet with staff. Again, I know that the general manager is already now staff, but I can certainly get involved and just sort of say, we need a decision, either we're doing this or doing that.
Well, the decision for what, Mr. McCleod?
Well, one is, is that they either become a society.
Right.
And then council says, here's your payment. You go and do what you need to do. You do your bookkeeping, you do your responsibility for accounting, you have to do the charity, depending on how you do it, society. But you have to set up a CRA, you've got to deal all of those sorts of things. And/or become a selectivity of council is the other option. I think that we kind of presented that. But then, of course, it's now different, because it is not run by a certain group in a sense of maybe that, collectively, people that are on that committee, but basically, you have the city becoming a more decision-making. You know, you will be doing this and you'll be doing that.
Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Thanks, Colin. Colin has touched upon a number of things here that some of us here know about, that are deeper in the feelings of the volunteers, and how they feel they should be involved in a future decision. So I just. Involved in a future decision, so I'll just say that there's some interesting things here that you're mentioning, but we're willing to. Sit down at any time to try and be helpful here.
Yeah.
We don't wanna lose this either.
No, no, and we, we wanna again honor it, respect it, but how do we, and it's, sometimes it comes to these places, twenty four years of. Uh someone leading the charge on this, and then someone doesn't lead the charge anymore, and then all of a sudden, now it's left to, how do we pick up the pieces, how do we work together?
Council Benson, thank you through the Chair, I just wanna appreciate that change is hard, and twenty four years of of running successfully one way and. But I think once we make a decision, and we can start the the transition steps, what are gonna be very valuable. And I guess, I'm just curious what those next steps are, like who makes this decision, is this a council decision, is it a C I B? Like, at the end of the day, how do we decide?
It's a great question, I think that out of respect for the the lead of C I B and the volunteerism that has gone on, it was, it was sort of left to them to say. If you guys wanna continue in the same model that you have, you really need to become a society, like that's, I think, that's what you need to do. Um and that has bounced around for, I don't even know exactly how many years now, but it's been a long time, but we now are back to that same sort of situation. So that's really kind of the main question is, if you're not going to become a society, and we just need to move to the next step. Uh and and it could be, well, the next step is, there is maybe a C I B, maybe does the city say, well, we. You know, we have uh similar contracts with M I and B, uh is there a bigger contract, is that's how we handle the beautification of the city? Again, I understand when someone says that, it can bring a lot of emotion forward, because it's like, well, wait a second, you don't have C I B anymore, and then. And I think that that sometimes becomes that uh group that we had, and we had the judges come in, and they tell us great things, and. But there's a cost to that, and and at what level does someone else want to run all of the things that go with that, or do we have to say? We have here's a certain dollar amount of budget, what can we do with that, and that's, I think, maybe more of what becomes with this like committee of. Okay, here's how we're going, and if if maybe it's, that's like the, there is sort of a C I B model, uh but there could be also a model where they say, well. Wait a second, we're not wanting to do that style of model, and then that, like you said, the passion, the sort of the volunteers, you don't wanna lose it, but. How do you facilitate it, basically, you've got kind of one or two options, and that's right, at this point in time, I don't think that the group is. Is kind of willing or strong enough to say, we wanna take on that role of creating this society, which takes a lot of, you know, aboard, uh. I guess that is sort of the, filling up the paperwork, we're, you know, being that part of that federal kind of.
Yeah.
Entity.
But also benefits in terms of different grounds, so I think it'd be.
Absolutely, that that is, that is exactly a part, it also allows them to say, thank you, city, uh for your funding, uh we're gonna get some other grants from this group and that group. But we're gonna run our show, you know, in respect and honoring of C I B, and and as I think that sometimes we're the dis- not the disconnect, but it's that. Uh we're moving forward, we're pulling away from C I B, even though it might be called C I B, but it is other places have had that C I B kind of piece, but. Move away from the official kind of uh balloons and and on all of the judging and all that.
Yeah, and then one more, just follow up if I may, through the Chair, um just to Mr. Smythe and Miss Brown, do you, do you, based on these, these two. What more information do you need from the city in order to help?
I could add, I could add something here, which is very direct, and I, again, with Colin saying, there was a session about a society. The, I would say to a person. Of the active people in the Communities in Bloom, volunteers, they do not wanna go the society route. And I can give you a number of reasons, that's not a question, another, another day, but at the same time, in our report that we have. We have gone and developed two models. Of what we think might be the way to go for the future, so there are pieces to discuss here, but the society one is of sense.
Is the two models, do they pair like similar to a, like what account, a council select committee?
Kind of, it's kind of like the way you run, kind of like the way you run your Silver City Days, that kind of model.
Okay, thank you.
But the differences then is that with these hundred and twenty volunteers, meeting with that many people at times is crazy. You have to have a way that you have a working group, a working group, and then we attach the volunteerism to the working group. That, that's a, in essence, is what the models were shown.
Okay, um Council Hanson, and then I think we have to move on.
Okay, yeah, thank you. I I actually, it was actually directed at Miss Butler, um how. Communities in Bloom is also in Passagor, I understand.
Yeah.
What is their model like?
Very similar to this, going through the same issues, because they've had. You know, where we have the broadlies, they have their own philosophy, and so it's the same thing, and they're looking at the same, the same issues.
And other municipalities that have communities in bloom, like the structure?
I mean, that's why I, I reached out to the Canadian communities in Bloom, and. And they're either, it's a society or a select committee, and they prefer the select committee, okay, so.
And then budget-wise, depends on the municipality, municipality, yeah, our size, thank you, thank you, that was the clarification, thank you.
Okay, thank you, so um what's the direction that you wanna go, if we want to um. Send it back to staff and get another, not another report, but. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
When I read this, the next step would be for the committee, uh for the Communities in Bloom group. To make that restructuring proposal, and come back and present that to us. And then uh I guess we'll take a resolution from Council, put it on the floor, and we vote on it, and see if that's the way we wanna go, wouldn't that be the, the next step?
Yeah, and I would think that we would, staff would likely be involved, and I think the Council just on what that. Newbering would be, just so that we're not in some sort of tug of war sort of thing, at the new, that we're uh giving best guidance as to the next step stretch.
Yeah, if I may, just a bit of input, I think Nick's on the right track here, and I'd say with Colin is that. I think we would go away, um and have to go back to the C I B group, and say, this is, uh we're being invited again to show the model, I mean. We have to do this democratically, for god allow, but at the same time, if we sat down with a couple of people from the Public Works. They can add what they have, and maybe we can come up with a bit of a presentation to you that uh could be something to talk about.
And and I think part of it is being inside a budget, and it's fantastic, people volunteer on that, but. I think that there's also been a reluctance to look at all the work we're doing, and say, can we do well, but maybe less, but you know. Better sort of thing, and I know that that sometimes could be a.
Well, one of the things that Rachel has done, she's come up with a plan of what you'd have to cut back to really bring down costs and really budget. And that becomes part of the decision, I think, we understand budgets, we understand that.
Brilliant, that's, that's perfect.
Okay, so we will wait for you to come back then for with another.
Well, I'd just like to explore, if you don't mind, coming back, this meeting ahead of time to chat out. And um I don't feel comfortable me asking Public Works to join us for the conversation.
Absolutely.
If you, like you said, it sounds, uh Mr. Smythe, if you go back to your, say, yours, you know, we were going to, you know, are you, do you agree with us? Going forward to meet with staff first and make sure that this, sort of the desire that you agree on in your group can come forward, and you can sort of. That it's sort of, Stephen can't miss the handles, and and bring in, and we would bring in our public works.
I would say from a foregone conclusion type, type of way, we know the way they'll go.
Fair enough. Yeah, well, I mean, that makes it easier than.
Thank you.
Connect with you next week to say, okay.
I think that is, I I think that it just becomes a choice, that's a very good choice, a bit more conversation and a bit more bringing some ideas to the table, okay?
Okay, perfect, thank you so much, so we uh look forward to hearing back from you. Okay, and just reach out if you need any help or support as well, please.
Well, you know what, what you did for us was uh very admirable, my meetings with uh Doug here, are you giving us this year? You keep going as usual, that was tremendous, we now have time to talk about.
Yes, exactly, so thanks for coming today.
Thanks, thank you.
So we're going to move on to our um departmental uh reports, please, and I'm going to ask that Josh. Uh the grounds and roads manager cannot first, please.
Eric Council, thank you for the opportunity to provide that, please. Um okay, so completed ongoing and upcoming work from grounds and roads, um the students have all started. We have seven in total, um. Uh four at Public Works and three at Center. All of our playing fields have been aerated and fertilized, uh we had a main water break from tech at Haley that left us without water for about three weeks. But we were able, able to get out of it unscathed, uh it's been repaired, it's back on, didn't lose any grass, thankfully. Um street cleaning, so right before Silver City Days, we did the bridge approaches right through to Jerks. And the West Trail Approach coming down the hill, in the coming weeks, uh we're gonna organize for Ross and Avenue now that the uh. The, that big water main break is done, and it's repaved, um all of the debris that washed on either side, we're gonna. Try and do some signage and notices and get as many vehicles as we can moved, and then clean that whole section, because it's looking. Unsightly right now, but we're, we're working on that, it takes a couple of weeks to um schedule a M O T. And get that approved, so that's probably maybe late next week at best, or early, or early in the following week. Uh the new more and trimmer are in service, the crews are very pleased with the quality of cuts, if you guys have seen uh playing fields, they're leaving very distinct lines. It looks very professional, so everybody's super happy with the, with the new equipment. Um currently Haley Ballfields, all three are being remediated, uh this includes tree pruning outside the fence, flattening the lip at the edge of the infield. Uh filling all low spots on the infield and remeasuring and restaking the bases, so. We're kind of aiming to do um a remediate at all bar, a ball, all ball, bald parks. But Haley one, two, and three um took precedence, because they've been, they spent a couple of years. So we're basically, we're, we're over halfway through, a little bit left at Haley one, and then moving on to Haley two, and then that'll be done for the year, and then just um gentle um. Dragging for weeks to come to get the uh user of student season. Um track meet season is upon us, we're up there on pretty much weekly basis, starting early on a couple of days, flushing and actually running the sweeper on the track. And then long jump pits, getting um, they kinda need a refurbishment after every meet, so. Um between Denise and ourselves and Derek Semestir, we've been um up there before every meet, we had a surprise one today that that missed the schedule. But we were able to get up there and get that um ready as well, I think the, the, the big one with all of the schools is Thursday, so we're preparing for that as well. Uh lane grading will be taking place in the next couple of weeks, so we typically rent a little mini grader from power paving. We get all the lanes done in preparation, and then once those are done, we work right into dust impression, so. Um the only other thing is just, we, I spoke to you uh on this probably two meetings ago, is the graffiti. It's worsening, um especially Rotary Park, I don't know, you guys are probably all aware that that gazebo was lit on fire again. We do have structural damage there now, to the point where it needs to be repaired, so. Um I was gonna, I'm gonna email Rotary and see if what our options are, but I think we're, um it's. It's a matter of time, as to when the fire department can't get there quick enough, it was, it did get up into the, into the Joyce up above, but they, they got there in time. But there is structural damage there now, so, again, that ongoing graffiti battle across the walking bridge, I'm waiting to hear back from the company on like. Uh perhaps a new paint that we could just go over, because any sort of material that we try to use to remove the graffiti is not uh. Uh legal to use over a water body, so that's still, I'm still working back and forth with the company on that, because it's, that bridge is, I think it's got two active tags on it right now. And they seem to be resurfacing weekly, so ongoing battle, but um that's what I have from my department. Happy to answer any questions, if you guys have any.
Council have any questions?
Go ahead, Council Hanson, is there, thank you uh through the Chair, is there anywhere on that bridge that could have cameras installed?
Yes, yeah, we have power.
And like power instead, that's I was just wondering.
Yeah, there's, there's streetlights or bridge lighting all the way down, um yeah, that's definitely Brian, Brian and I've, I've spoke to that in the past. It's definitely, um it's definitely an option, I don't know, I bought it, if I'm being honest, I don't think it would help. But you might be able to get footage, what you can do with that after, I'm not sure, but every time was good. We have Brian, um going, and I have discussed that, and it is, it is uh an option for us, if that, if we figure that may help.
Just one follow up question, and and do you find it after the weekends, or do you find it during the week more? Just wondering, like, if there's a presence down there more often, or is it when there's no one around, kind of on a weekend, that you see that happening overnight, or if it's during the week, like, is there any?
I haven't, I haven't, I haven't pinpointed times, um the problem with graffiti is, it's usually some, not the person obviously doing it, or somebody that saw it. That's reporting it, somebody that's a pastor by, right, so it could be legal, it could be an hour old. Um what I'm, what we are seeing is that now um with the, with the new location. It's the walking bridge and then through Rotary downtown is kind of the new um highway down there, right, so um our benches are getting um. Lit on fire quite a bit, um the sitting areas on the approaches on each side of the bridge are getting tagged, so. Um that is a high-traffic route now, and definitely the incidences are going up. But I haven't, yeah, after a weekend, I'm not sure, I mean, I probably try and pay attention to that and see if we can narrow it down, but. It's usually pedestrian that's walking or using, or uh walking along the bridge, or walking through the park, and then the email comes in, so you never really know when it was done, but. Um the walking bridges is a tricky one, because you're very limited as to the products you can use over the river, and so. Uh like a re, a sort of resurfacing paint seems to be the most realistic option there, because you're, anything that you are able to use over the Columbia is not gonna remove the product. And because it's a textured uh deck, it's, it poses some challenges, you can't really scrape, because then you remove that texture, which is your gripping surface as you walk over the bridge, so. It's tricky one.
Okay, go ahead, Council Hanson.
We're about, uh we just take the gazebo down? That gonna be on the?
Yeah.
Options?
Yes.
It just seems like the only people that are using it are.
It would be my recommendation, I think, to, there, if we can relocate it before we don't have it anymore.
Uh I know that there's some, the red tape there, and I wanna talk to Rotary about that, but I'm, I'm honestly looking at it as it's, it's not a matter of when, it's. What is, it's a matter, isn't it, right? We've had, I think, at least three, pro- possibly four fires in that gazebo now.
Yeah.
Um the last one being the most significant, and actually taking away from the structure itself, so. As it sits now, it does need to be repaired, and just because of the, the higher volume now, we're moving through that arc. It's, it's a matter of time, and it would be nice to relocate it before we don't have anything to relocate, so.
And then those benches by the, the walking bridge with the high volume, is there, it'll just bolt it in?
Yeah, yeah, so it's like a composite, um composite planks, bolted down, so. Um Brent, I guess, is really good, he's done so many repairs on them, um lots of times when the damage happens on the top, you can flip the board, or you can bring them back. And actually reburn them at Public Works, and kind of get that surface back, but if it's, yeah, if they haven't been burned, they've been graffiti, um. Sharpies right through the paint, so it's kind of an ongoing, we, I had Brent go through. Um right before Silver City Days and try and grab all the benches along the areas that were gonna be, you know, high volume for the downtown traffic, and he did. He got through a bunch, but it's just, it's, he can't keep up at this point, we're doing our best, but it seems to happen a lot more than we can. Actually get over there and repair them, but.
Do you ever look at removing those ones, or are those, are they donated, those ones, do they have the plaque in them?
Uh ye- yes.
See all the dumb benches do.
Yes, I believe most of them do, I can get back to you on that, but yes, a lot of the memorial benches, and when they get tagged, like, they're not, um they're still salvageable.
Okay.
Um Brent does have um composite boards at the, at Public Works, too, if they get to the point where they're irreparable, then we can, we can swap them out, but. It is just an ongoing process.
It's too bad.
Just unnecessary.
Yeah, it's just, yeah.
Super unnecessary.
Okay, if there's no other questions, we'll let Josh go.
Thanks.
Or you can stay and listen to the rest of it. Okay, so then we will invite um the Utilities Manager, Krika, thank you.
Afternoon, Mayor Councilman, thanks, thanks to the councilors. Um as you know, we had the big water main break, uh Josh mentioned it, uh all the cleanup involved. Um that was Wednesday, May fourteenth, approximately two P M. Um it was a twelve-inch cast iron water main that fractured, and um. We lost about five hundred thousand liters of water in a hurry, um for that perspective, that's twenty percent of an Olympic-sized one. Uh or sixty seven percent of the city trails when you go, so, just as a, as a perspective. Sixty seven point seven, six seven. Um damage, it damaged sixty seven meters of road approximately. Um flooded one basement, three inches of water, uh we got pretty lucky, they were able to clean it up quite quickly. And we created a couple sinkholes along the trail creek, which we're fixing up as we speak. Um the crew was on site for about seventeen and a half hours. Um we just weren't able to isolate it, so very, it's very difficult to fix a water main when it's still alive. Um we could slow it down, but not enough to make a repair, so that happened, you know, early in the morning. Um. We're also working, we're also uh performing U E directional flushing, um I have Mike Oliver from the water treatment plant. Uh heading it, one of the utility operators, so we're underway doing that, uh we're in Sunnydale right now. So if you hear any discolored water complaints, that's what's going on, we put signage on. Rosson Ave, we also fixed a uh, service line repair. It was happening very close at the same time as that watering break. We just um, another service line on seventeen sixty four Noran Street, another emergency repair. Just did an emergency sewer line repair on fifteen eighty six Pineout, just up the road here. And another line on ninety four sewer line on ninety four Nelson Ave. Uh, we continue to replace uh, upgrade stair lighting as they fail. Uh, I mentioned, I mentioned that last meeting, but it's ongoing. There's a lot. Our C and G, in our CMP building, we installed another, an exhaust fan in the basement. Um. It's very problematic for sewer odor. There's a kind of a leak station downstairs, so that's uh, we're just waiting for ducting. Uh, we performed six sewage lift station inspections just recently. Yeah, we're responding as usual to several water shut off requests and utility locates, all routine stuff. We responded to seven sewer backup calls. Um, all of these except for Popple Park Washroom, we're on the homeowner's side. So we are in the clear. Um, and our utility summer school is working wonderful for us. Uh, just painting fire under boards. Lift station, uh. You know, electrical bolts, just kind of sprucing up the place a little bit. And I have, these are kind of. Next week, we're working on, we have to expose the twelve inch water main on McBride Street, that's the water portion. Um, we plan on getting any valve kind of there because there's issues with ising that. So we intend to um, expose that, get a precise measurement. And then there's a a company you can call now that'll come in and they can do it live, so they can install a valve life, so. That will save us a bit of time, no disruption. Um, yeah. Charles Lake Drive Water Main Project, um, did receive the geotechnical report. Um, for the alignment, we intended on, we explored the option of um, putting the water main uphill. From the road upside you know, hillside. It's too, it's not gonna work. Um, it's just too dangerous, there's too many rock slides, um. So we are gonna go back to the roadway and get the design for that. So I was just hoping for that route because there's no disruption. To all the citizens that live in Sunnydale, so. Go back to, go back in the door. Bear Creek well upgrades, uh, I'm hoping to have that up to ten or two to three weeks and that will be for the fall repair sale. And that's it. Anything else?
So I, this might be a silly question, but I was thinking of the, uh, would it be possible to put the water uh, main line along the river wall?
Yeah, we are looking at that option as well. So either in the road, uh, the problem with the road is then you have two big water mains side by side. If one goes, it can undermine the other. So then you're back to square one. So yeah, that is another option. Um, if we can. Kind of save the rock walls while we do it, that's a very deep trench though.
The, so looking at the oh, the twelve inch water main there, the fracture of it. Is there a cause other than just age that that would have occurred under that that line? Cause I mean, it's a pretty. Obtrusive crack along, horizontal crack along it as opposed to uh, you know, across it where you would see.
Yeah, it's it's partially age. Um, all, you can see what it was embedded with. It's all rock. It was embedded with sand like it should be, so that's a big uh. Issue as well. The alignment where it broke out of the bell also looked like it was slightly out of alignment, which. Um, it does weaken the pipe over time. Um, when it's brand new and strong, you get away with it for years, but as it. Diminishes with age and that's something going as well. And chocolate can also contribute.
Okay, there's no further questions. Thank you.
I just wanna say I had a lot of help from my colleague Josh on this water.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, next we have the General Manager, the Minister of Services, Gary Young. I know. Okay, thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Your Worship, Counselor. So it's been a few weeks since I set up. I think I actually stood the first ass, so I'll actually sit down this time. Um, the good news is I'm no longer counting weeks since I've been here. Um, I'm now part of the furniture, as they say. Um, when I was here, the first time I talked about doing an initial cast swat analysis amongst all the different departments that I'm currently overseeing. Um, I'm happy to say that the first round descriptions have been completed on that. Uh, with the one exception being the uh, Cal Center with Fanny still not being here. We'll have to follow up with her when she's back from leave. There's been some really good discussions and some good synergies amongst the outcomes of those discussions. So right now, what we're doing is we're putting together a bit of a. Low hanging fruit, key tasks oriented for coming out of there as to where we should put our efforts. It likely isn't gonna be a surprise to anybody that our main focus is going to be hovering around asset management. Our processes, our procedures, our tools, and how that allows us to better understand our capital requirements, our planning requirements, our. Compliance with regulatory requirements. So that's gonna be a key focus. I kind of put my hand up as champion for that. Nobody else knows it yet. But uh, certainly gonna be a massive area of focus. Um, couple of other smaller themes around resource efficiency. Um, some roles where we need to provide clarity, potentially uh, maybe split or reallocate. Who's essentially managing those roles. There's some opportunity there to to get more efficient. And also just, you know, working on our work order system, which maybe sounds a bit simplistic, but it may be a good tool for helping us. Make sure that we allocate the resources and work together as a a whole team and not as individual departments. So that's kind of the long and short term goals for the next little while. Um, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so we'll be moving on to the uh, the purchasing and mechanical managers available today, so. Um, Engineering, Manager of Engineering, Scott Brooks.
Name, Counselor. Uh, so I'm gonna provide an update today, uh, project update on nine oh one and nine hundred. I expect you would all like to know what's going on with those two demolitions, so. I was kind enough to get a little template from our new General Manager here, so we'll be getting a similar sort of analysis from uh. Uh, so this project uh, for nine hundred and nine oh one, I combined them, they were both awarded to the same contractor, so uh, helpful for me in dealing with one contractor for both projects. And good for communication with public as well, I think. Uh, so both projects just got underway, uh, as they were tendered as fixed price contracts. I'm not expecting anything budgetary to come out of it unless there's big changes that we. Pose, um, other than we'll have our third party contractor doing some uh, onsite checks and balances. Uh, everything is on schedule still as far as for completion again in September. Um, genetic environmental, the subcontractor during the abatement arrived on site today. Um, they're gonna be getting set up. We did temporary water connection at the building for them and they're getting temporary power set up. Uh, they expect to begin abatement this week, and the plan is to start at nine oh one Helena for about six to seven weeks. Uh, that'll be the abatement process. A lot of the primary network will happen within the building, so there won't be as much uh, impact for the public. Other than the building footprint, they've probably seen as far as some fencing, um, and some garbage totes and stuff outside. Uh, so with that minimal public impact, um, there's been some parking that's been taken away and some pedestrian access, but it's all localized to the footprint of that building. With sidewalk immediately in front of that. Um, some key achievements so far, uh, the mobilization of contractors to site and interior debris just over this past weekend removed from nine oh one Helena alone was. Uh, two thirty yard luggers and recyclable metal waste, uh, and three forty yard luggers of general waste material. Um, so they were busy pulling stuff out of there. I walked through the building this morning, looks empty. Um, no risks were identified up to this point, uh, and I'll continue to be in communication with Garrett, with local, um. Every day throughout this project and uh, with her communications coordinator, Claire. There's any questions? I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Okay, on to Parks and Recreation, the Facilities Maintenance Manager, and that's Megan. Welcome.
Worship, Counselor, thank you for having me. So, yeah, my my reports can be primarily focusing on our two major projects we have going on. Uh, and I'll start with the chemical refrigerated floor replacement. Currently. Uh, we are within budget on our projected spending limits. And at this point in time, we're about four days ahead of schedule on uh. The, upon the initial contract schedule was given to us. And some key milestones, so in the next ten days, we'll be achieving our first milestone, which is the conclusion of the demolition phase of the project. This will be followed by subbase preparation and installation of our underslab heat systems, which will take place before the my next reported period. Um, there is a, there has been some public impact to the overall site, which is a reduced access. Around the backside of the building. Uh, this is to ensure just public safety and to clearly delineate from a construction zone versus public access areas. Some key achievements that have happened, uh. We've got the safe mobilization of contractors to site, set up site access control. The de- uh, demolition of the old dashboards went very well. And then there has been an identifi- identification of soil types below the slab with the. Uh, beginning of the soil removal. And with that, there has been a couple of identified risks with the project. First being there's a number of uh, buried timbers and different pieces of concrete slab of unknown origin that was discovered about sixteen to twenty inches. Under the original refrigerated floor. Um, but then a mitigation strategy with that is that the concrete timbers and. Concrete and timbers will be excavated and just added to the material being removed. This will add. An estimation of four, seven days onto the project, but in essence. With that, hopefully it's a Washington line, maintain the project stage. The other. The other item is there was positive identification of slag about sixteen inches below the slab of. Uh, in soil. Uh, Atkins Real was retained by Tech Metals to come to site and did a number of test, test pits. And they have provided a report, a technical report to delineate the safe commercial use soil from the. Uh, slag containing soil and tech has agreed to take that, so the slag containing soil back. So, yeah, that is, uh, yeah, so the currently we're removing all the safe. Uh, commercial use soil and then this being segregated from the uh, slag containing soil. And then. Uh, on to the uh, heat recovery project, or did you want, trying to ask, trying to ask any questions before I go on to the heat recovery project?
Any questions from Counselor?
Okay, yeah, now I'll touch on the heat recovery project. Um. The project officially will begin on June second with the prime contractor mobilizing the site, but there has been a. A couple of milestones that we've achieved. Uh, our refrigeration contractor came in and has removed all the liquid ammonia from the plant, so. That is just to get into preparation for the upcoming work and. Yeah, that has also, it's all been safe and transported to Cal, so it's not even stored on site. Yeah, and that is, yes, and then June second, we, the prime contractor will mobilize, so then that will be first initial phase of. The heat recovery project, so we'll be able to provide a more thorough date next month. No questions?
It seems to be moving so.
You're just going by and blink. Mr. Oble, we're very happy.
Yes. So, uh, if there's no questions, thank you very much for coming today and um, yeah, we look forward to doing that, definitely. So we will be moving on to the staff reports. And the first item uh, is the monthly reports and it's the reports on employees paid for municipal services from April first to the thirtieth. Twenty twenty five. Is there someone to, uh, thank you, Counselor Wilson, I was in favor. That was carried, thank you. And then we had the Building Department report for April twenty twenty five. Is there any questions or comments on that? Just someone that wants, oh. Mister McFlair.
I just um, again, wanted to know the difference between twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five. Um, at this point in time, Harrison is one point five million to six point three.
Okay, is there someone to make motion on that report? Thank you, Counselor Hanson. All those in favor? That was carried. Uh, next up, we have the Trail Little League Major Tournament Park location and uh, do that.
Thank you, Your Worship. My name is Counselor, thanks for having me this afternoon. Uh, so I'm here today uh, to uh, affirm the location of the Little League Championships um, for twenty twenty six for provincials and twenty twenty eight national tournaments. Um, as you all are aware, uh, Trail Little League Executive, uh, as well as the staff at the time. Um, compiled a bid that was placed and it was deferred for a little bit of time during COVID, um, but it was awarded in early twenty twenty four. Um, for us to host these tournaments. In early twenty twenty five, uh, the Trail Little League has pulled together a committee that they will um. Be planning uh, both the events and also any uh, repairs and infrastructure replacements uh, in the fields. That committee sent representatives on March twenty fourth to appear as a delegation before council. Um, and in that uh, delegation, they spoke about uh, upgrades required at Beliski, but also. Um, about moving Beliski, Andy Beliski Park to another location. Um, within that delegation, they noted Popple Park and also Haley Park. Um, so in early twenty twenty five, since this committee's been uh, has some members. Um, and kind of a president or somebody that's leading the charge for their their committee, uh, we have met um, and outlined a few items. Kind of a want versus needs, um. For especially the the national tournament. So the provincial tournament, there's some minor repairs that are needed, um, that can be done uh, with our own staff through public works. And some volunteer hours through their organization. Um, however, uh, the nationals, um, they're looking at doing some bigger infrastructure projects. Um, so we've, we've delineated some of those i- um, items, um, and we started getting costing towards those, um, and. Uh, as noted in the financial section, uh, the city has earmarked around four hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh, in the twenty twenty seven financial plan. Um, and noted in there, as of right now, it's uh, cited as fifty percent of that is through grants and fundraising of the organization. And so I'm here for you today uh, to uh. Confirm the locations that we can certainly explore. Um. There were some initial uh, site planning considerations for the other park locations, uh, namely around siding. Uh, so for instance, Popple Park, uh, it can accommodate two Little League fields with some um, upgrades to the parking. Um, similarly Haley Park has softball fields already, which is some minor alter- minor alterations, um, could be added for Little League. Um, however, we haven't done any feasibility on those in terms of what the cost would be to reallocate. Um, any communications with uh, user groups that are already in those locations, as noted in the report. Um, community soccer uses Popple Park and uh, there's a number of um. Girl softball leagues that use Haley Park as well as coed um, adult leagues uh, there. And so if we were to move forward with any of that, there is some feasibility studies that would be required, that would require some funding, but also time. And we don't, staff doesn't uh, feel confident that we could complete those in time to either host provincials and nationals at the same location. Um, and it would stretch our resources to get the park uh, moved and in place before the national tournament nationals. But such, um, the recommendation for you from staff is to confirm his commitment to host the Little League Championships at Andy Beliski Park. Uh, with required capital improvements.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from Counselor? Any questions or comments from council? Go ahead, Counselor Hanson.
So, um, I was looking at the budget, so four hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars earmarked. Um, with fifty percent of that expected to come from grant approvals from Trail Little League, grant applications. What amount would we traditionally or over, you know, that timeframe have earmarked for that park preparation? Where is it at on our? Upgrade list of things that should be upgraded for our assets? Is it behind? Is this kind of in line with where we should be doing upgrades to that park again, or? Where's that?
Yes, thank you, through the chair. Um, yeah, great question. Um, I think in terms of, we haven't spent so much money in Beliski Park in terms of. Major upgrades in a number of years. Uh, for instance, Butler Park just received, uh, green lighting and some improvements there. So, uh, nothing, uh, outside of operations where we've done, um, some minor turf repairs, a little bit of infield maintenance and stuff like that with. Volunteer support as well, um, but no major allocations in the last few years, yeah.
So, quick question, um, will we have to close any of the parks down, uh, to ball? You know, during the, um, upgrading?
Yes, the expectation is in twenty twenty seven, uh, it will not be available for use. Um. Trail Little League is aware of that, uh, and with, uh, the excitement around it, there, there, there's no issue there. Um, there are some options to move them around and for the year, just to make it work, um, while the upgrades are happening. Uh, but if, uh, funding goes through and, and well, you know, we would be stripping the field and leveling it to new turf, so yeah, it, it would be, um. Difficult to, to play there during that time.
Okay. Any other questions? Oh, sorry, Council.
My question on parking, is there any concerns around parking? Any plans to, uh, deal with parking, potential issues?
Thank you through the chair. Um, they do have, uh, a small parking lot there to, separated in two different ways. Um, in terms of the provincials, there's not much of a concern, but on the nationals, um, there will be a lot more individuals here. Um, they are gonna be in talks with the Alliance Church down below to, um. Hopefully use some of their parking lots. Um, it is a quick walk up the sidewalk up to the field. Um, and then we are in talks again very early. Um, um, but we could delineate the arena parking lots. Um, TMC and they could provide some busing on a routine schedule, um, to try and accommodate that, so there's no later, um. Improvements that would be required there outside of the normal operation. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no other questions, um, for David, we will move on to the recommendation. And the recommendation is that council confirm its commitment to host the Little League Championships at Andy Beliski Park with the required capital improvements. Melissa Benson, all those in favor? That was carried unanimously, thank you. Thanks, David. The next item on the agenda is the digital road atlas, atlas updates and. Did you want to speak to this?
I will, thank you, Mary Council. I'll be reporting on this on behalf of common, one of our city engineers, GS technician. Uh, so within the provided report, um, the purpose is to look at some changes that need to be made to our road structure system, naming convention, and unaided lanes. Um, it goes through the NG nine one one system that's coming around across the province to the country. Um, it's been delayed and so we've got a bit more time to work with it than we thought. Uh, but, uh, needless, these changes need to be made. Uh, as the current system relies heavily on our civic addresses and within the city, we've got a number of addresses and streets that don't correlate to what, uh. The NG nine one one system will use through Google, Google Earth and Google Maps. Um, so what we've, what we've done with this report is we've gone through and looked at where there's conflict within our streets and. Uh, changed some of the orientation of those roads and put addresses or street names which reflect where the houses front onto them. Um, and this all aligned with what the provincial digital road atlas is, is looking to achieve. So there, uh, as far as a financial consideration to this, the time spent, uh, in doing this work within our department, which it was, it was. Within wages, uh, some, and some minor costs occurred for some new street signs, corrections outside of the public. Um, but as it stands, the recommendation is the council approved the digital road atlas, as shown in the layouts, uh, which were provided. And, uh, May twenty sixth, twenty twenty five report in the engineering department.
Thank you, Ben. Any questions?
Thank you through the chair. Um, is there any communication that needs to happen to residents in terms of, is, are any of their addresses changing or?
So through the chair, there's, this is currently underway. Um, the city has notified. Several, uh, residents, but, uh, those changes were not updated through Canada Post. They fell quite short. Um, and with the upcoming strike, we expect that that's to wait further. Uh, so we've been making changes within our system, but not notifying residents until they receive something from Canada Post. They indicate that those changes were made to addresses.
Thank you, uh, Council Hanson.
Uh, thank you through the chair. I just wanna say this really excites me and will make my life that much easier. Um, because there is a lot of times where there are roads that don't exist and lanes that don't actually have anything attached. And my one question was, so where we've got drainage ad here on the Oak Street Extension map, which makes sense, because people don't really understand that. Um, where drainage loops around, now those properties down along there, are those ones along the frontage of Riverside named Riverside? Or is it just that's the back alleyway of drainage? Because I don't know if there's any address, like, is their addresses come up there and are they on Riverside or are they technically off of the lane off of Greenwich Avenue?
Uh, yeah, through the chair, any, any property that fronts a street would be off of that street. And that would remain in our main lane. There are no properties that I'm aware of that front onto that main lane.
Thank you.
I didn't see Grizzly Jones way or tried.
Uh, are there any other questions before we move to recommendations? I've been seeing none, okay. We will move to the recommendation and that is that council consider, uh, that be. To approve the digital road atlas updates as shown on the layouts provided in the report dated May twenty six, twenty twenty five from the engineering department. There's some, thank you, Council Butler, all those in favor? That was carried, thank you. Thanks, everyone. Uh, okay, so the next item on the agenda is, uh, the Trail Wildlife Association. And the Trail Wildlife Association, uh, application. Um, is there, does council have any questions on that? Uh, I just wanted to, um, make an amendment to the recommendation for council. I would like to see that the, um. Amendment be moved to a thousand dollars per year for the next three years because we know that it's a three year. Project for them and just to make it. You know, it makes sense that we, uh, approve it one year and, you know, just keep supporting that for the next. Couple of years, so, uh, if council is in favor of the amendment.
I make that.
Thank you, Council Wilson. So all those in favor of the emotion with the amendment. Thank you, that was carried. So question period. Keen staffer. Okay, thank you. Okay, um, so, uh, resolution to rise from the committee of the whole place. Someone wanted to mention, thank you, Council Butler. And Council Hanson, all those in favor was Carrie, thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda is a resolution, uh, that pursuant to section ninety of the community charter. The public be excluded from this portion of the meeting as a subject matter being considered relates to the following. The community charter section ninety one B. Uh, the community charter section ninety one E. Ninety one E, community charter section ninety one G. And the community charter section ninety one K. And further, that the public portion of the meeting be recessed until six P M. And further, that council immediately resolve into the post portion of the meeting. So thank you, Council Butler and Council Wilson, uh, second, all those in favor? That was carried, thank you.